That's a motion.
Would you come out of executive session, let the record state that one vote was taken to seal the minutes?
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bata Malin, yes, this is the G., this is O'Hara, this is Zelensky, this is Pierre Guy.
Yes. Open forum pursuant to round to forty-two, forty. Would anybody out there would like to come up and be heard? Glenn, would you like to get up and complain about the neighbor's dog?
No.
They moved the fur.
Mr. President, noting that there is no one in the audience, so I'd like to make a motion.
I got a lot of problems.
Okay, will you retract that? Mr. McGee wants to...
No, he doesn't.
No?
I guess so.
Okay, Mr. President, a motion to dispense with the open forum pursuant to forty-two dash forty-six dash sixty due to the lack of attendance, no residents, no members of the public.
The motions are second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bata Malin, yes, this is the G., this is O'Hara, this is Zelensky, this is Pierre Guy.
All business, discussion by council or other action on sidewalk improvements for Smithfield Road, White Parkway and Summit Avenue. Mrs. O'Hara, would you like to be heard of this?
Yeah, first of all, the main concern would be Smithfield Road. The women at, I've had some contact with people there, are going to cut down when you move all those giant structures in front of houses that are just eating away the sidewalks pretty much. Also, we're against the move, they're not handicapped accessible to begin with, as they say. No wheelchair, there's no incline for wheelchairs to go up and down. Like I said before, the only one in nineteen ninety-eight that was refurbished was the Dolty House, where they did right in front of his apostle, which I believe the president should be, and they put in granite curving at that time. Since then, because there's no parking, I think Gene Pelopon talked to someone, I gotta remember that, putting no po, we had one no parking, so every time there's any gathering at Berry Field, they literally, because it's only about maybe a foot and a half setback, you know, breakdown lane, did pop on the sidewalk. So in the last year and a half, I've had well people say, you know, when we walk, we have to go in single file, one part of the sidewalk's only about two feet. The other thing I have a concern with, the original sidewalks, I was worried in that area, began at the car repair place, where the water was only on something else at that time. The sidewalk, because we would go across walk and walk up. But somehow, and there's a swale right at the end of Kenny Bianchi's old property, so if the sidewalk ends there, the people literally are on top of a drainage and have to walk because the people, the two houses before, pop on the sidewalk. And the one in the Yankee's house sometimes, well, there's no sidewalk, they fixed it all nice and well. And, but that was all the parking on that area, so anyone in a wheelchair has problems. I fell, because now the tower's almost the same as the road, trying to get up, during the winter, there was, they've since removed a bunch of asphalt, just flowers and left. And the heat rest was difficult, I fell from the walker, wheels of walkers broken, I have a torn venous, no hip, hands and buttocks, I'm not concerned, which we tried shots and it didn't, just wanted to have, I have to have surgery. There's two people in wheelchairs, as it is now, and someone suggests we'll just go across to the one socket side when they're set from the sidewalk. You know what Smithfield Road is like, sometimes it can be fifteen minutes to get out safely. It's very dangerous. I wouldn't let my grandson, who's in middle school, cross that road, go to the pizza place, you take your life in the hands, because when that light is green, it's thirty-five miles an hour, and they see that, it's forty-five to fifty, because we have a curve up, huh? It's a danger. I tried to have it done, and I've appeared many times before the council since nineteen ninety-eight, and I was told, it was by Mr. Old Town Bond.
Oh, Council Councilman?
Calzerowski, edited my own to tell me it was too late to do everything, and they were going to start the first English break. Then I was at the town council meeting, and he made the announcement that we're moving on a trace, Smithfield Road. Didn't say well. The only street they ended up doing is Summit. And at that time, our town administration, Mr. Low, looked at every house, showing them trees, dwarf trees, you can have this, you can have that. When they ended up planting them, they planted the same trees they cut down. And at that time, one of the men from the bar, Town Bond, I said, he said to me, he says, surprise, surprise, he's the one that told me. He said, I burned his attention, these are the same trees that hit you. And his response was, he'll be dead by then.
Who said that we'd be dead by then? I'm like, what, the administration?
No, no, the administration.
It said you'd be dead by then?
Oh, it takes long enough, I mean, that, Mr. Low said he'd be dead by the time the trees were grown. There was no preparation except for. But White Parkway is not bad, any sidewalk section that was bad, in fact, the town themselves have prepared, and I think they've done a good job. Our street, they're coming up a little, but as time goes on, and they could have done it to begin with, you can, you can cut into it, and they survived, they do it on each side, and north, and north more than. They've moved some of the roots. But the Smithfield Road is horrendous, it's been taut over so many times, the sidewalk is about, about this much higher than the street.
Well, I don't think we can do this.
Oh, yes, it's a...
Who said we can go in the state and do a sidewalk on State Road?
No, where the state, oh, yes, they already have. All right, the state, this is what I was told by Calzerowski, the state, if the man is up, it is up.
That's thirteen years ago.
I'll get it, I don't care if we do it, we have some amount, I think we're going twenty years now.
We just, yeah, we're not allowed. Just like I told the lady when she wanted the sidewalks on Main Street, I said, don't wait for it, it's never happened.
Then who do I sue? You or the state?
The state.
Wait, can I make a suggestion again? If we, through this town council, we make a motion to the state to bring that section of one forty-six eight, hold Smithfield Road, not also, Smithfield Road up to ADA compliance, and we can certainly do that, ask them to take a look at, we have jurisdiction.
Then, you know, I go back to you, from School Street to Gators Farm, fifth side.
Notice that?
Absolutely, you can link up, absolutely. They're right up to.
She went around.
From School Street, absolutely, and I sleep most of the time on both sides.
From, from where? From, to Gators?
School Street.
If you go west, north, maybe?
Not the side street, the main.
Take a left in front of the market, in front of the plaza.
Oh, Victory Highway?
Not shortcut.
Well, that's why I'm...
No, 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 you couldn't put anything there.
Well, that's what I was saying.
It says this way to Gators Farm.
You said Main Street.
Well, I said, well, no, School Street.
Well, where's School Street?
That's where you're sure to go to, Village Angel.
Right, so from School Street, up to Gators is State Street.
Some more, bring it to Town Hall, all the way towards one two, take a left.
Oh, well, I didn't know you took a curve on the way, I was going straight.
Oh, to Town Hall?
And I'll tell you, Union Village.
Yeah, Town Hall. I think we're talking about, what's Leeway?
You're talking about...
Cross over School Street, Green Street.
Oh, she's talking about Wayback there.
Yeah, that's where the sidewalks are.
I'm thinking it goes from Smithfield to Victory, to, um, um, Smithfield to Great to Victory.
Yeah, there's many names for that.
It goes one into the other.
It goes down Victory, then it stops.
It stops just here, please.
Yeah.
Well, the state, I know for a fact, has these people that go around the different businesses to make the, to make sure that the, uh, the business, the businesses, the handicap ramps and everything like that, it's...
We have no handicap.
But there is, imagine they could, they've been us, we just went through the...
There's no handicap.
I think that's a good idea, why Mr. Zelensky, just ask him.
Make a motion to this council, Mrs. O'Hara, hopefully will make the motion to ask the ground, by my train's...
Hello, Mrs. Zelensky.
To review ADA complaints sidewalk from White Parkway up to where?
Well, actually, it's from, not just White Parkway, you go from, uh, Lieutenant's Stewards, from the Stop and Shop.
Okay.
Okay, because there are sidewalks after that.
Yeah, there are.
Stop, from Stop, the Stop and Shop, the tenters are, all the way to the auto place, auto repair place.
Yes, do we want to extend it across the beef farm and head up that hill, because there's no sidewalks over there either?
The thing is there, whole.
We're not.
The whole, thing is there, there were setbacks.
We haven't fixed what they have, but I don't think they got put new sidewalks in there.
There were setbacks there, they moved it walk.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, there were setbacks all through that area, that, a few had sidewalks, a few in the older houses, but there were setbacks, you know, like six, six feet or so, okay, that we walked as kids, and suddenly it was taken over by the, the property owners, where they, when it shows, there's that back.
Again, there's wider roads over the years.
No, it's the same, the roads are the same, definitely.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I'm seventy years old.
Since this issue was, was raised at the last meeting, I have done three things. One, the zoning officer has notified the property owner of the owner of Smithfield Road and Summit, that they have two issues that need to be tended to. One is the condition of the trepery on the front property line, the third, the sidewalk. The other is the RB that is parked in noncompliance with our ordinance that is causing other vehicles to be able to be parked either on the street or over the property line and blocking the sidewalk. That notice was sent out on Friday. The, in addition to that, I have communicated with the office of the state, as council woman O'Hara indicates, park, no parking signs have been changed or installed or played. That happened as a result of Mr. Pelopon's complaint to me, that signs have been taken down through the state traffic commission office, they were replaced. I contacted that person today to ask for evaluation of the sidewalk on Smithfield Road. And finally, tomorrow, the sidewalks on Summit Avenue as well as White Parkway will be evaluated by DPW director to make an evaluation of what needs to happen there. As Mrs. O'Hara indicates, work was done last year on White Parkway, quite satisfactorily, I think, to the, to the residents. There are these issues with trees that, while, you know, some will, will advocate, you know, whoever we can to make good sidewalks, other people will advocate that we save the trees. And there isn't enough space in the setback, in the, in the separation between the backside of the curb and the outside edge of the sidewalk, in every case, to be able to sustain trees. We're going to wind up in a, a conflict constantly with tree roots and sidewalks. Even some of the sidewalk that's been replaced is already lifting because of, so we'll have a report for you at your next meeting on the DPW director's perspective on what we should be doing on White Parkway and Summit. And as for Smithfield Road, there is no way that we have the ability to just go ahead and make any repairs in, in the state highway. We're going, if you recall, we're going through, I stamped and sent in a physical operation permit to be able to make the modification on Molly Road, which we own. But because it intersects with the state highway, we've had to get a physical operation permit to be able to do what effectively is simply removal of pavement, not installation of new pavement, because there's hot state highway concern about impact on returning radiuses. So any work that's to be done in Smithfield Road is, is a purview of the state. We can ask for, for many things. I've already asked for an assessment of the condition of the sidewalk of Smithfield Road as well.
I want to ask those, the no parking signs that they erected were never there. Gene Pelopon moved in at a later date. I walked that sidewalk, from like six years old when I was born. They were attached to the, to the telephone poles, there was one on the curb next to Kenny Bianchi's old house. The sidewalk, as I said, just went down to those garages, but every five feet, there were not those no parking signs. There were wonderful, but they weren't, they weren't replaced, they were new.
Oh, correct, I, staying correct, we got new park, no parking signs installed, that did request of a resident who was concerned about the safety of people crossing the road to Berry Field and exiting and entering both White Parkway and Summit Avenue, in the visibility.
And if we have no parking signs, I would really like our town police to enforce them, because they're not being enforced.
I think so.
You want to be good name.
So it sounds like we just wait till, if we get it next week, it sounds like the administrator has another control.
Absolutely.
So he has, how he power to an assessment?
Absolutely.
Next week, some type of written report would be great.
Ready to move on?
Yep.
Discussion by council or other action on motor vehicle registrations. We have something in your packet from Sarah Thrope indicating that for the month of August, she has not had any complaints, a new form submitted regarding any out of state vehicles.
Um, I just wondered, these are the two officers that were, that are now our, our pool officers at the middle school and high school, Obie, is Obie Low, then how can we be doing this all stuff? And I'd like to know, how many, were they supposed to go, or they waiting for people to write in? Because I go back in the summer, hundred twenty-six teens, and I counted more later, what's the number of out of state vehicles?
In one location.
One location. So, you know, I can remember back, when, some of you may remember that, when we were, people weren't paying their taxes, we hired a lawyer, he went after them, he got a present to you. Maybe we should have, man Molly's or Molly Man going out and doing something. Because right now, one socket seems to be a little more successful. How many citations did we give out, maybe fifteen? And that's not even only in state, these are just out of state. And I'll tell you one reason, because insurance, et cetera, is so much cheaper and massively less.
I know. Officer Beal will be, being placed by Officer Stephen Hunter going forward on this issue. And Chief Reynolds reported this morning to me that they have nothing to report beyond the earlier at the last meeting.
But the point is, what have they done?
Yeah, if it may, may...
Absolutely.
So, basically, it was back in, well, back in May of two thousand seventeen, council O'Hara and I, even before that, we took a ride through a particular apartment complex in County Road, one hundred twenty, vehicles that were out of state registrations. No way to know which in-state registrations were actually registered in North Smithfield. Since that time, we've had some reporting. If I may ask, that a monthly, okay, I think we were getting this at one time, how many, what's the term, I don't use the correct term, notices that your vehicle may not be compliant, how many were issued, how many responses? I'd like to see that on a monthly basis, that's just one location. How many out of state vehicle owners have responded to this notification that they may be out of registration, but they should be, this town in North Smithfield? You know what, I think we, no, let's just see what it is. If one person or two people don't believe in this process, like Council O'Hara and I do, then it's going nowhere, because we're not day-to-day operations people. This has to be shepherded by someone that's going to keep their thumb on it and make sure that it happens. I'm, I'm very disappointed in the lack of results, the quantitative analysis of how many people were contacted, how many have responded. At first, there was some correspondence, some people from Canada, some people from a residency, I get that, but out of a hundred and twenty something vehicles in one location, we should have more results than what we're going to receive. So I'm, I'm a little frustrated with the pace of this, so I would just say, someone that works day-to-day for the town has to sue these responsibilities.
Who, who you think that?
I was thinking, you are in touch, I don't think...
Someone who you think...
I'm telling, I'll tell you right now, the town administrator should be directing the, the tax assessor, or someone in that department, and asking, having to sit down with the chief of police and making this happen, because we're losing, we are hemorrhaging. And you know what else? It, it hurts the morale of people in town that have been paying their fair share of taxes for decades. And I, I think apart from the money we're losing, I gotta tell you, I've heard people say, I'm going to register my car in Massachusetts, and I'm going, you know, I'd suggest you don't, but this is what's going to happen. So in essence, I, we need to get a firm grasp on this town. If someone that works for this town full-time, if someone who works for this town full-time on the municipal side, hopefully the police department will cooperate with them, and we can start to garnish some revenue out of this, because I don't see it happening. You see these tax payments every month come in, with the debits and the credit, I mean, we're losing money because other communities say, tax dollars belong to them, we're, we're on the losing side of this every month. So I would like to say this address, and we can have some progress.
And sometimes they help their friends, we have two people in, are in thought, seem very nice, and let them get settled, you know, but then as a neighbor, I want to walk over and say that you've been into the town more than two, three weeks now, and you have set amount of time to register, seeing your residences here. I'd hate to see you do that, you know.
You want to see people doing that, like neighbors?
If, I would do it, I, I was going to talk to them.
People don't like that.
Well, guess what, that's what I would do.
Well, I don't, I don't like that.
I gotta tell you, we're going to need the police over there.
Would you rather have it taken, see your couple, would you rather see them get, get fined? I, I don't want them to get fined. You do it that way.
Well, the other thing too is, like, I don't know, John would know more, but what you, I'd rather have my police looking around and taking care of police matters more than them looking at plates and places.
Then get someone else.
Well, that's what other communities do, Tom, they have their police officers do that.
Well, Socket's doing it right now.
Borrowville are very successful.
Well, I'm just saying, I, you know, I'm just saying...
Mrs. Zelensky.
You know, this is one, now, or else, and we had the police officer in front of you most recently, who has been shepherding this, and he's now transitioned to an SRO position. That aside, I take offense at the suggestion that anybody in Town Hall is not taking this seriously. That's not the case. But I am not, if I might, if I might, Mr. President, through you, please.
The circumstances such that I am not the police department, I do not run the police department, I am a public safety officer, and I do have the ability to tell the police chief what to do, but I will not step into a circumstance like this and tell him what to do, because I think we're overstepping our bounds. Now, that said, he has committed to this, you had the officer in front of you, and you heard from him just recently that all of the, they have reviewed, they went to the, the single apartment complex that you looked at, and several others, for forty straight nights. And they used that data to be able to find people, to, to issue summons, and they gave you a summary of that as to what has happened. Now, no one is taking this lightly. I do lament the circumstances, we do have a loss of revenue, but I also don't have unrealistic expectations. There are excuses, there are reasons why people do have legitimate reasons to have out-of-state plates. Some of them are not legitimate, and we need to find out what those are. We're doing that, we will have a new officer assigned to this, and we'll be able to have him present to be able to cite the, update us on what citations have been issued, what fines have been issued, in detail, once he has his feet on the ground. I beg of you to, to let him, some, give him some time to be able to do that.
Sure, absolutely, good. But let me ask you this, administrator. So if the police department, if it seems to be manpower or a question of time for them to do it, how are the other communities? Councilor O'Hara just brought up a point, when Socket's more successful. Borrowville, I believe, administrator, you actually asked Borrowville their process for doing it, which was a fairly straightforward process, they seem to be successful at it. Best practices, are they doing something different that we're not doing?
No, and I don't think Borrowville's results are any different than ours. When Socket has a concentration of these things, it far exceeds ours, I recognize it. That city is three times the size of the council of field with a sort of, very different demographic, and, you know, making the comparison in Socket is interesting, but, oh, well, you know, Borrowville has, is not continuing to look at this issue. They looked at it, it's done. Is it part of what they do every day? Yes, I suspect so, but not as intensely as we're trying to make it. That said, we're continuing to do as you requested, the, the police department is, is watching for these circumstances and reporting additional presence of out-of-state vehicles to this day. And, you know, all will be reported as we have it, but at this point, there is nothing to report from the tax assessor. She is not to be out there looking for vehicles, that's not her job. This is a state law, it's not a zoning issue, it's not an assessor issue. And she can tell us what the result might be, maybe, when there are, you know, clear cases that someone registers a vehicle and we get an identification of what that increased revenue will be. But absent that, you know, if, if people simply go out and register their vehicles, we have no way of knowing whether that would have happened anyway, or has happened as a function of ongoing activity, so...
Because of the landlord's requirement, their liability, if someone moves into the apartment and they have a dog, they have to register it at the town in North Smithfield. Maybe, I think we suggested this before we take a look at dog registrations, because the landlord does not allow folks to have a dog unless they've registered it at the town. Again, it's liability, clarify. And I'm not sure how much time the town clerk's office has to look at this, but if we start out looking at dog registrations, there was a new folks that came in and registered, stop there, follow up with a letter. Welcome to North Smithfield, glad to see you registered your pet, have you registered your vehicle in the town of North Smithfield? Might be something we could look at, maybe we have an entrance, or somebody come in to help out, because I know the town clerk's office, I go in there, and those ladies don't have time to take a break, they're extremely busy. So this could be a way to, and are we going to catch all the folks with out-of-state plates? No. But people that have dogs and have to register them, that's a start, just another way of looking at trying to get some revenue. Because God knows we have enough litigation revenue coming our way from a lot of things.
But I, I gotta, I gotta agree with Gary on the police officer that was here, that's, those were some good results he came up with. He was pretty thorough, so I, I think, I think they were trying, I thought they were trying. I gotta agree with him, that, that man was very thorough.
Very thorough.
I, I was impressed, I was like, he's not going to find anything, and he had a list a mile long.
I'm not questioning his thoroughness, I'm just questioning the amount of continuance.
Well, it looked to me like he was trying, to me, because I, I was like, I was impressed.
No questions, Tom, no questions, he was very thorough.
Oh, okay, well, I'm just saying, I, you know, I'm looking at it going, hey, I was impressed with all of the...
As a matter of fact, to show how much I agree with you, I called his supervisor the next day, and I told him, make sure you let the chief know what a great job he did.
That, that guy, I gotta tell you, he's the best guy for the school too, that officer is top-notch, so I mean, that guy gave you better than that.
No one's questioning that, we all appreciate him.
Yeah, all right, I just, I just, hey, we complain about people all the time, we say things about things, I just want to give credit where credit's due.
Yep.
You know, and I just want to be honest with you, I, I was pretty impressed, you know, but there's always room for improvement, but I think, and I, and honestly, I, I think Gary should try too, because I mean, this, this is a tough job, to try to pin this down.
Can we, can we agree to this? Can we agree to let the new person, and then settle into the position, give him a couple of weeks or a month, and then let's reevaluate, and see if they come out, see if the next one that we get one of these.
Hold it, hold it fit.
See if the next one that, these that we get has some numbers on it instead of...
Hold it fit, okay?
We'll have him into the rest of the council, please.
Okay.
Thank you, administrator, thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, discussion by council or other action on a water pit for traffic impact analysis, Pampoe Road and Route one forty-six, this is not here.
I'll take that. We, if you recall, the next step in our effort to be able to manage a change in the intersection of one forty-six and Pampoe Road, to be able to provide access to the... of 146 and Poundville Road, to be able to provide access to the, ultimately, to create a through street from that intersection back to Great Road in the area of Branch, the entrance to Branch Village now, the Branch Village industrial area. The next step was to get a traffic study done for what the new condition would be so that state and federal highway officials could make a careful analysis of that. We requested, we, excuse me, also recall, please, that we spent, I think fifteen thousand dollars already at your approval to be able to understand that this was feasible, that we do know that we could create a street over the side of the hill and through to Great Road. We don't want to build that street, what we want to do is get it permit-ready, as close as we can to permit-ready. And so, we passed effectively a straight face test on with the, both Rhode Island DOT and federal highway as it relates to creation of that roadway. The next step is to confirm for them that we won't be creating any kind of a traffic hazard in the non-Poundville Road with the turning vehicles, new vehicles that will be going into the park as well as the existing traffic. We went out for bid for that issue, to do that work, we received two bids, the low bidder was McMahan Associates at a price of ten thousand four hundred dollars, and I would encourage your vote tonight to allow me to enter into an agreement with them to be able to go forward with that work. McMahan, by the way, is a consultant that the state uses to be able to do the analysis of Maori and do some.
At what point are the bricklayers going to be responsible for investing into some of this? I mean, they're the ones that are really, kind of, it's going to be a huge windfall for them. At some point, are they going to jump in, jump on board and help with some of this cost to get this done?
I'm unable to say what the landowner will do. What I can tell you is the ability to be able to be talking about this has already generated an interest that was expressed to me in the last two weeks by an entity that is trying to locate a three hundred thousand square foot distribution center. There will be a fine application for that property. So, and without this access, there'd be no discussion.
Of just weathering it?
Yeah, it's a fair question. You know, we are, I think, full disclosure, we're taking action that will improve the value of privately-owned land. There's no two ways about that. On the other hand, this privately-owned land has been, you know, languishing for decades, and I fear that what will happen is that it will fall into, if it were secondary uses, it'd be great, it might become tertiary uses that we don't want in this, what is, I mean, in my view, highly valuable property, and that it's industrial zone, it's our most heavy commercial zone, and the ability to create more of that is very difficult. So, you know, our initiative to try to make this land attractive to third parties is the key. I have no interest to build roads, I have no interest to do anything but show a prospective developer, be they, you know, an investment-type developer or a specific user, that here's the path. You can do this, all you have to do is run the CDOT, here's the plan, you know, do the work.
Is this our last loop we have to go through?
Well, like so many things, I can't guarantee that either, but I can tell you, if we don't do this, not even.
But I mean, I just want to know, how many more things could it be?
You know, the easiest thing for me to do is to say that, oh, this is it? I don't know that. This is the only question we've been asked since we made the original submission. I think the value is appropriate to the potential gain that we could see in the way of tax revenue as well as job opportunity that creates growth in the Branch Village area.
I think we're all aware, we've been looking at this for decades, it's a great move, little money, great return, job multiplier, revenue creator, no question. I originally was going to post a question about our refuse until the administrator told me that they were like the returning from the work on Maori Road. Because sometimes we look at the amount, we're seeing there's a swing here of five thousand eight hundred dollars, you know, that's a swing, it probably says, what are their qualifications? But my fears have been of the rest, my administrator told me that the state had to work with him on the Maori Road project, so that's, they still have to be safe. I'd make a motion to approve the ten thousand four hundred dollars for the rate for the redevelopment office talk about referencing traffic analysis. So, what do we have listed as?
From McMahan Associates.
From McMahan, I just want to take it off the agenda. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the water pit in the amount of ten thousand four hundred dollars to McMahan Associates regarding a traffic impact analysis, Poundville Road with 146. What's the motion?
Second.
Further discussion? Go over.
This is my one. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Your guy?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Ah, thank you. So, this seems to be a lot of flies.
Fly, yes.
Yeah, it's a, the door of something must be open.
Well, we have.
You sell a little tennis racket, did you?
I have.
Great crib.
They're awesome.
They're great.
It is fly season still, sometimes we need to cook the flies.
Okay. Discussion by Council on other action and change order from Martone Services Company Incorporated for Town Hall restoration. Mr. Duskin.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you recall, I was authorized to go forward with a contract for Martone Company to paint the exterior wood surfaces of Town Hall. That original contract was for forty-three thousand dollars. In the process of doing this work, we realized that, for one, there was need to be placed some clapboard in the gable, the building faces the bridge. We also had not included the painting of the metal column covers, the aluminum column covers around the forefront columns. Once the rest of the white was all painted, the white columns actually had looked okay before, didn't look good. And we also learned that the black staining on the top of those columns wasn't just something that could be washed off, they were pressure washed, they were washed with alcohol, and it would knock them off. So, we needed to paint the four columns, and then the interior of the back door of the Town Hall was a wood door, and again, the contract was for exterior services, so. The fact of the matter is, all this work has already been done, they were leaving the site, and frankly, I think the pricing here is a bargain, especially for the column work and for the clapboard replacements. The door, maybe not so much, but I encourage your approval of this change order, we'll be sending an invoice at the next meeting.
Yeah, I gotta be honest with you, when you paint a house, a building, why would you leave out the columns? I would never expect that to, you're gonna, you're gonna paint something, you're gonna leave the columns out?
The, as I said, these are aluminum prefinished columns, we painted the wood surfaces, we asked for a proposal to paint the wood surfaces, and I'm with.
And then the clapboard that was on the house, didn't, didn't we have the clapboard included with the repairs and everything?
No, because we didn't know how much it would actually happen, so it was an adjustment in contract price for the actual.
So, did we say we were repairing it? At one point, they took a good look at the lettering, everything, and they said, this is taking care of the, all the dental work, everything on it. So, if you're looking at the dental work, you should be looking at the clapboard too.
True, we were painting all of that surface, but as you get up there, and, you know, I never got up there myself, but the prior administrator indicated to others that you had, and you put your fingers in it. So, the issue became, okay, once you start pitting it away, how much do you have to replace? You can't, you can't, how much, tell me what you're gonna do. You gotta, oh, how many feet of pipe you're gonna put in Town Hall?
Well, I wouldn't have said I was gonna do all the dental work at a certain price, and then said, I would have said this would be an extra.
And that's what this is? It's not, it's not part of the.
It's a hell of an extra.
The sixteen hundred dollars for the clavest?
It's twenty-three hundred, yeah.
No.
Yeah, sixteen.
Sixteen hundred for the clavest.
Fourteen hundred for the columns, hundred for the rear.
Oh, this is the whole bill?
This is the whole bill.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I thought, I thought you meant for.
Yeah, no.
Sorry.
No, no, no.
I had a problem with the whole.
Thank you.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve the change order for thirty-one hundred dollars for Martone. What's the motion? Your second?
Second.
Go over.
This is my one.
Yes.
Mr. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Veerbal?
Yes.
Discussion by Council on other action and award of bid for roof repairs at Town Hall. Mr. Duskin.
I apologize, you don't have a document on this. We did go out for bids to, within the seventy-five thousand dollar allotment that was provided by the council in the budget, the capital budget for repairs of roofing and painting in Town Hall. We had originally included the roof work in with the painting, and we wound up with the circumstance of only going forward with the painting work because the roof work was just considered out of, just an unaffordable and, I don't want to be respectful to the bidder, but just an inappropriate or non-responsive bid with that. We did this again, we got a quote from, we found is, is that there's limited interest in slate roof repair. And we happen to have, we got one bid in for the roof repairs from Rhode Island Slate Roofing that happens to be based on Blackwood Road. And we have negotiated with Rhode Island Slate Roofing with the assistance of local architects to the point we've offered to you that the, there is, there are a few categories of work. We replaced the copper hips, this is what initially started this. If you, you may have noticed over the past several months, there, at the hips of the slate roof around the Town Hall, there are pieces of the copper cap that have been flying around. All the fascinators on that copper have rotted through, in many cases, not all, but in many cases they have. So, we have leak exposure at each of those, a couple of those type of circumstances. Replacing that is estimated, or is offered to be a twenty-eight hundred dollar expense. Replacing missing and broken slates throughout the slate roof with a best available material to match is another twenty-four hundred dollars. There is a, there are asphalt shingles that you can't see from the ground, that if you could see them, you'd agree that they're done, they've been done for a long time. Why we don't have leaks, we don't know, but the, there are two sections of that roof that join with slate roof across copper valleys. So, in order to replace the copper valley, the shingles and the copper valleys, there's need to do removals of slates on the, on the edges of both of these. The estimate for that, the offer for that is a total of ten thousand five hundred dollars. We, in the process, being up on the roof, while we were focused on roofing, we made a mistake of touching the chimney. Never should have touched the chimney, and by touch the chimney, I mean like that. The brick on that chimney are ready to fall to the ground.
Needs pointing or?
It needs rebuilding, period. It isn't the circumstance of repointing, there's no mortar to be able to take out and have the brick stay in place. In fact, we worry it will just take work right out. That chimney is not being used, the boiler replacement that was done in.
Ten, sorry, ten, twelve years ago.
Is it that long?
Even, yeah, fifteen.
Something, we have a modern heating system in the building, it vents through the side of the building facing Hercules at a low level, and the chimney's not being used at all anymore. So, but the historic circumstance, we, we need to repair that chimney, the cost there is about three, is three thousand dollars. It will be rebuilt and capped with a metal cap to keep water and animals from being able to nest in, because now that it's not being used, we're concerned about odor. There'll be no heat going up through it, there is no heat going up through it in the winter time, so the masonry is freezing, obviously, with exposure to rain, and that back and forth is just gonna tear it up unless we protect it from internal moisture. And then finally, the work requires a lift rental of twenty-one hundred dollars, and the total here is, sorry, do this, twenty thousand eight hundred dollars, it is within our budget for this. The one thing that we are not doing is a, and not including in this work, is still something that should be done, but I think we, with this work, we will get the building to a point where the exterior wood is protected, we won't see further deterioration, as I think was happening, and the roof water tightness will be complete. What will not be done is anything with the gutters that are beyond the wall of the building, so leaks in the gutters should not penetrate the building wall, they should just result in concentrated circumstances on the outside, or, not saying it's acceptable, but we, I believe we will be coming back in the next budget cycle for appropriation to do a line of the existing gutter.